First item on the agenda is to approve minutes from last meeting.
That would be two of them.
Two, right, we had the executive board.
Checking session on both of them.
So we can combine them both, right?
Right.
I make a motion to approve the common council and the executive meeting minutes.
Approve.
No second.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Jeff. We need to take roll call.
Yes.
Kissling.
Aye.
Duvon.
Aye.
McFarren.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Five eyes, no names.
Next time is the approval of claims.
Can I make a motion to approve the claims as presented?
Seconded by Jose.
Second.
Roll call.
Kissling.
Aye.
Duvon.
Aye.
McFarren.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bounce. Five eyes, no names.
Okay. Well, just a couple of housekeeping things before we get into our illustrious guests that are with us this evening. First of all, we did close on 407 Jackson Street yesterday morning, so that is now our property. We've given them till October the 15th to give everything out of the house. There's some things in there that probably won't be that long, but we gave them plenty of time to do that. The shed will be gone back here in the backyard. So hopefully they're going to sell that for some reason or another, I'm not sure why, but it is. Anyway, it's got to be gone. She actually accused us of buying it only to get rid of that shed in the back. How did you know?
How'd you know?
So that's that. The update on Chinawalk Building, if you've not been by there, the new windows are now in Chinawalk Building. It has opened it up tremendously. Jeff and Tim, I think, were there yesterday with me. They can probably attest to the fact that it certainly is a different look from the inside looking out. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, for sure.
They have all the things in it, so. With that, I want to turn it over to Rachel to talk about the Wayfair signage update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did everybody get the copy on board pack of the plan?
Yes.
Okay. It's basically pretty simple. If you've read through it, pretty self-explanatory. But it just basically broke it down into three sections. We have the identification signage, which would be the signage that would go at the actual landmarks, like in front of City Hall, near Market Street Park where public restrooms are, things like that. And then the directional signage would be, like, those are like the vehicular signage that would go all around town. I think you'll see in there, there's a map where they've actually identified where they think best places for these signs to go. And then the third thing is the gateway signage, which is something that we've talked about for a number of years. It was one of the projects identified in our stellar plan a while back. And something that we really want to move forward on. Design-wise, for the gateway signage, they really only provided two designs. One for the south side entrance and one for the north side entrance. And the idea with those designs was really just to kind of pull for, from some of the things that our community is known for. So like on the south side sign that says home of League Stadium. And each of those gateway signs also have a little section where they can put, we could put potentially a sponsorship if someone wanted to donate money for these signs. And we actually have already had a couple of people approach us with interest to do that. So it's just a thought. I mean, this isn't final. It's for your review, and I would welcome your feedback. I mean, I don't really have a timeline on this. The budget-wise, as far as paying for even like the directional signs that would come out of next year's budget, so. But in the next couple of weeks, if you have any feedback on any of it, I'd be glad to hear it, and we can kind of make some changes. And then I'd come back for an approval of this plan.
Is there a reason they didn't do the east and west?
Design-wise?
Yeah.
I think.
For gate, gateway?
Well, we haven't really identified where those will go potentially. And I think that's probably still up for discussion, what we want to include on those signs. Like, one thought for the, it would be, I guess, the coming east. You know, that's kind of by our industrial area, so would that be maybe a design kind of honoring our industry? We just haven't really narrowed down what we would want to put there.
I'm sorry, I just wondered if they just hadn't done it.
Right.
The only question I have is the color. I understand it looks pretty sharp, but will that color last in the weather versus black?
Yes, that is something we talked about because I actually asked about black because I thought that would stand out more if it were, you know, a darker color with light writing. And they suggested these colors simply for the fact that they would probably withstand like sun better.
Because these are, these are looking like, these are all metal, right?
Correct.
The red part is going to be metal on top of some kind of a background. It looks like a, with a metal background too, or no, limestone backdrop, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So it's more like, it's like a stamped out, it's like stamped metal, is that what it is?
Correct, yeah, they're like cutouts.
That's the way I read it. Get laser cut those.
Yeah. Could we get the ballplayer to look more like one of the peaches?
A peach or a bomber, or add a peach, maybe?
We could add a peach.
Make him look like a bomber, yeah, add a peach, definitely, yep.
I've got a question. How would you do sponsorship? Would you put their name on it permanently or for an annually fee or?
Yes, if you look at, I don't know where to look.
On one of the sign, there's a place on the little, where it looks like a star on the, on the drawing. See the drawing, Tim?
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, see where that looks like a star?
Yep.
That's what they call, put a sponsor plaque.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would think that we would, if they were going to sponsor, they'd pay for the whole thing, period.
And just leave it up there forever?
Yeah, just as they, as they sponsor that particular sign, rather than, so you have to pay for it.
Got you, sure.
We've already got, we've already got a couple of people that have already expressed interest in doing that already, so.
And you will notice on those entrance signs too, they did include metal poles where we could still put the banners for different events and things like that.
I think it'd be very nice.
Yeah, they're pretty nice.
Nice if you wanted to pay for it.
Right, right, right. Sponsor's plaque, where's the, and the plaque is on the, it's on the poster.
Right, see where the star is? That would be a sponsor plaque.
Yeah, if you could get somebody to sponsor that, that'd be ideal.
That's got to be big, that's 14 foot tall, that's pretty nice.
Even if you shared sponsorship too.
Yeah.
I could, I could understand they want sole sponsorship.
I can understand that.
It all comes down to.
It all comes down to the dollar amount.
Exactly.
I'm not, I'm not against sponsorship, I mean, as long as it's entasteful like that, we're going to do it.
And it looks uniform, I mean, I think that's the biggest thing. If we kind of create an area where we would put that sponsorship, you know, different logos and things like that, it still looks uniform on each of the.
Yeah, it's, you know, unlike, unlike a stadium or something, we're not renaming the town.
Right.
We're just sponsoring the sign.
They're just welcoming people, helping us welcome people to the community.
So.
So I don't need approval or anything like that.
You just brought it to attention, okay.
It's more just an FYI for you to review. And like I said, in the next couple of weeks, if you have any feedback, please let me know, and then I'll bring a final plan design to you guys at a future meeting.
They did a really nice job of the, of the presentation here, as usual.
Yep, so too.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope? Okay, thanks, Rachel. And you're welcome.
I said thank you, didn't I?
No, I said, but you're welcome, because you got to go before anybody else.
Oh, yeah, thank you for that. My mistake.
All right, next we're having Destination Hunningberg annual update. Sarah and Brian, and Brian's going to do this.
Yeah, yeah. I might rope Sarah in for different pieces here. Hey, everybody, thanks. My name's Brian DeKemper, I'm the board president for Destination Hunningberg. And just as part of our agreement with the city, we'll be excited to share an annual update with you all here on what we're doing, what we're working on, and some of the things that have happened here over the last year. So on, I've got some, some slides right here in front of you, if you want to follow along. We're not going to go through it verbatim, we'll just kind of walk through some of the highlights. And if you have any questions, we'll be here to answer those. So the, the board itself, on page three, you'll see we've got a new member of the board this year that we've added a board seat to try to create a tighter relationship with Visit DuBois County, the local tourism agency. So Whitney Loopers from Visit DuBois County has joined us. It's just something that we're trying to do to make sure that we're as tightly ingrained in the things that are happening, whether it comes to promotion or events or the calendar. So that's one, one quick update on the board. You'll see the executive committee, and then the board of directors there as well.
And just so you know, Tim's talk doesn't have this full brochure, so.
Hey, Tim, we'll get this to you electronically, sorry about that.
Oh, that'd be great, appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. We're lucky to have representation from, I think I'm probably the only person that's not either a local entrepreneur or somebody affiliated with the city, but we've got a lot of people here that represent legal, tax and accounting, the city itself, and a lot of local businesses that you see right there. So we've got great representation across the board. On page, looks like page four, the mission. This is a question we often get just in terms of the core mission of the organization itself and how we interact with, you know, other groups here in the city, like the Merchants Association or even the Chamber as well. We're very much focused on the development, enrichment and advancement, these pillars that we see right here. Whereas the Merchants Association is very much focused on retail, very much what's happening here on Fourth Street and in town. The Chamber is very much working on business development, other things related to things happening here in the city as well. We're much more driven on family-friendly, family-friendly events, arts, culture, things like that as well, to bring all those together. We interact with our peers in all of those groups, but that's one question that we usually get that I wanted to throw out there as well, just so that you know a little bit more about what it is that we do. And then on, one big update this year that we've got on page six, if we flip forward to Current Blend. As some of you may know, the Current Blend co-working space on Fourth Street, on West Fourth Street, the board dissolved last year. And the facility itself was originally designed to be a co-working space for people that needed temporary office space, entrepreneurs that maybe didn't have a home office or a brick and mortar presence, but they needed a place to work. They needed, you know, printing, they needed internet, they needed a desk and things like that. That board dissolved last year, and we decided to work with them to try to take on the property, to maintain it, just because we felt like it was an anchor not only in terms of the facility itself, but it was something we felt that there was opportunity to try to grow or at least look for a potential business plan to keep it going. So we actually acquired the assets and emerged Current Blend as a co-working space with Destination Hunningberg, and we're now the, essentially the curators of that space. There's a link right here that doesn't do you much good right now, but if you do a Google search for OFS case studies, our, our partners at OFS, we were able to work with them this year to put together a full refresh of the facility as well. So if you haven't been there in the last year, it's, they're using it as a model for some of their promotions and some of the things that they're doing, and it's been a great asset to what we're trying to do with the facility, just to try to make sure it's attractive to people looking for a co-working space as well. And then the, from a financial standpoint, we have about 25 active members. Right now, we're really bootstrapping, quite frankly, the operations for it. It's about break even in terms of what we're able to do from a cost and revenue, you know, equation. But we're going to continue to try to do what we can to keep the building open. And as we look for a new business plan over the next year, try to find more resources for dedicated director positions or other opportunities to grow the membership, to try to make sure it is a little bit more viable other than just kind of break even with the resources that we have today. So I'll pause, is there any questions on Current Blend and our association with that today? I wanted to make sure I could share that. And if you'd like, Sarah and I are in there almost every day, come by and check it out if you're ever walking through there. The new furnishings are pretty great. The downtown footprint, so the, the origin behind Destination Hunningberg, for those that remember, it was really tied to the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, the OKRA organization, to the original stellar grant. So we needed a Main Street organization to function to help try to handle some of these things that came through over the last several years, some of the great developments. And so the footprint itself, on page seven, you'll see what our official designated downtown footprint is. You see, also see that dogleg annexation of League Stadium down there as well. And that's something that we've had events at League Stadium, they've been great partners of ours too for hosting different things. So we just try to make sure that we can include them in the footprint that we consider part of the work that we have here. And then on page, let's see here, page eight, there's an image there of the Indiana Main Street Organization and just a little bit about the, the return on investment that these kinds of entities across the state put forth for their local, local communities by way of OKRA. And you see some statistics there just about revenue generated and some of the things that these programs do, like what we do here at Destination Hunningberg. And then the following page, on page nine, you'll see just a little bit of what we've been working on over time. 2013, 2014 was really the beginning of the organization. We, we were able to hire a part-time executive director in Sarah in 2017, which is able to, is something that's allowed us to really scale what we do with events and the work that we do with our local community stakeholders. Other than that, it's a volunteer board, of course, so it's great to have Sarah as part of the organization. And then the Current Blend merger, acquisition there in 2020, and then moving forward here into 2021. We just received word from the DuBois County Community Foundation last week about a grant. So it will be for $15,000, which half of that will go to an endowment that we'll be starting as well to work on things, potentially some other programs that we're working on, facade program the mayor mentioned earlier, different things like that where we're trying to make sure that we can open up new opportunities to do more than the events and other types of things that we've done over time. And then the next page, we have a couple of slides here just about the kinds of events that we've been working on. Date equity, the page here that says Destination Hunningberg Events. Date equity and event equity has really been a big part of what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure that our Farm to Table event, our Fourth Fridays events, for those that have gotten to come down and see those over the summer, the Haunted Hunningberg event, that we can continue to build the reputation of what these things are as, as community events, music, art, entertainment, culture. And all of those things, we're continuing to try to expand those. And, you know, if there are things that, you know, we see an opportunity to transition into a different type of event or opportunity, we'll do that. But these logos right here represent some of the work that we've done with the farmer's market as well. Most, most everything here utilizing the new Market Street Park venue as well, which has been a fantastic opportunity for us. And then lastly, our, our goals here in 2022. We've got quite a bit of opportunity, so pulling together the Current Blend property. We're looking for some web asset revamp as listed here, so we're trying to do a little bit more to make it easier for people that are in town to drop in and have a daily membership, weekly membership, things like that, that can utilize the space. We have top-notch facilities there, we want to make sure that people know how they can access it, and it's easy for them to come in and subscribe and join us if they'd like to. Another part of that is just further collaboration with our community stakeholders here at the city. IU Center for Rural Engagement and Merchants Association as well. And then continuing things like the, the endowment project, looking at our event calendar. We're working with Brad Pfund, who's our treasurer, to try to find out, you know, are there things where, quite frankly, it's not sustainable to keep an event up, but we can do, look at doing something else. So we're going to take a hard look at the event calendar to make sure that we're doing things that are great not only for the city, but also the community, but also that work well for our operations and there are things that we can continue to grow. And then also, lastly, the, there's a national accreditation for what we do here. We're affiliated with the Office of OKRA, but there is also a Main Street America designation. It's essentially an accreditation that allows us to be eligible for other types of grants and financial opportunity. And so that's something that we're going to be looking at as well. In the past, it hasn't made sense financially, but that's something that I think that we'll be looking to move forward here in the future. And, and then lastly, we have, we've been selected to host the OKRA Community Exchange, but it was postponed because of the pandemic, but that will happen here in Hunningberg in 2022. And we expect to have around 150 to 200 attendees coming to the city for that particular meeting. So, and then the remainder of the appendix is just a little bit of information on some of the events that we've had over time, including the ice skating rink, for those that remember that last year, our community movie series, and then the other things that we've been affiliated with and hosting here in the community over the last couple of years as well. Sarah, Rachel, anything that you'd like to chime in with here or share? Okay.
Very good, Brian, appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions for anybody?
No, they're nice job, the ice skating thing was really, that was pretty cool.
We, we're in the process of locking that in again for this year, knock on wood. We're hoping to be able to pull that off, it's something that we want to keep associated here with Hunningberg. Everybody that we've talked to loves that, they have that same reaction, so we're hoping to keep it going.
That's good.
Awesome. Thanks, Brian, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for your support, everybody.
Mr. Rudea Peller.
You can carry on.
Remember what you told me yesterday. Okay.
Our, the gas department, they're fairly busy this month, took nine new services in. Four of them were Hunter's Crossing, four of them were over in Ireland area, and one was over by Lake Helmut. We got them installed, we got 12 applications on file, keep coming in as we install them, which is good. Then they replaced the gas service, our customer is installing a pool, so we had to move their service over in the Ireland area. And they installed 950 feet of two-inch plastic main on West First, we bored a lot of it in. We eventually want to tie into the regular station on West First so we can eliminate it, keep it on the low-pressure side. Then they've been working on yard repairs, this summer we replaced a two-inch gas main and steel services on William Street. So we gave the ground time to settle out, and in the fall, it's a good time to put your, seed and grass down. So they've been working on that. And Brookstone Seven, it's now ready for home construction, it's over in the Ireland area. Forty-nine lock subdivision, phase one is just about ready, the road's paved. So we're going to be starting home construction there probably in the next month. So, and it can be fairly minimal cost to extend the gasser, but we have gas around the whole property. We just got to go down cul-de-sacs with the gas mains, so it's going to be very minimal expense to us.
That's why it's over by in Ireland, right?
Yeah. Yep, it's coming along pretty good. And last week we did have two days of audits with the I U R C. First week of the month, we had three days audits with them. Kim and Greg sat down with them, everything went real well. We didn't have any violations, so credit to Greg and Kim and the crew. We got all the reports done and turned in and recorded, so whatever reports they wanted to see, we had them there. That turned out good. Anything, questions on the gas? Electric side, we did cut four trees along the highway with the help of the street department. They're right underneath our power lines, the customer, they don't trim, just take them down, so they're gone. And then we did bore 1,000 feet of underground on Roger Street that is behind the city park. That's a little single-phase line runs along a tree line. And between storms and swirls, we had a lot of outages. So we decided to put that underground, we just got that completed. And then we did move some overhead line on West First, I think it used to be the Judy Olden property. There's a home being constructed there right now in that woods. And to run the primary poles, we really wanted to replace the pole, but since we're going to replace the pole, we decided to move across the road to avoid the large trees along that side, so that turned out real good. And then last week they did help at the city park for the Hertz Fest, we had to run some temporary down there. And then we did install the foundation for the charging station out on the parking lot. Now they will come install it in a couple of weeks, hopefully we'll get that up and running. Any questions on the electric?
No questions.
Nope. Don't need any approval for to spin anything, so.
I'd see it better yet. Thanks, John.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, Austin. He wants to suspend mine.
Oh, yeah, all of it. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. We'll kind of jump gears there, we'll start with the filter plant, it's always good, since our updates. We, no issues there whatsoever, we've had some, kind of some fights with the weather. With the cool evenings and the hot days, our lake's rolling a lot and mixing up the solubles and it's been kind of a bear to treat water, but we're finally getting a grip on that. From there, our metering system, no compensate there as well, we had two stale reads today. So they're reading like they're supposed to be. We've about got all of our meters that are in-house installed in the ground, we're about 80 shy, I believe. And then on the distribution side of it, we had four new water services this month. One was Hunter's Crossing, one was in Chestnut Gardens, and then the Arby's on 14th Street, and one on West First Street for a new home. We had a fire hydrant that's been out of service for a little while at Second and Washington Street. We finally got the hydrant in, so we were able to get that installed, and all of our fire hydrants in town are now in service. We, when Endot was doing some entrances to parking lots, they dug open the one at Butch's Exhaust and found a large amount of water there. Ended up being potable water, we had a company called Emmy Simpson come down, and they do pinpoint leak detection. The leak hadn't surfaced anywhere, and they'd just done a lot of work there, and we didn't want to just start tearing the road up following water. So they actually found the leak on the corporation stop for the service of the church on Main Street. We dug it up, and it just so happened to be lead, so we had to replace that whole service line. We had the help of Hunningberg Machine Works, they came in and bored a new service line across, so we didn't have to dig up the whole road. And with that, we didn't know what kind of material we had in the ground from Third Street to Fifth Street down Main Street. So we potholed every service to make sure, unfortunately, we found three other lead service lines, so we had to replace those as well, change those out to copper. And that, that concluded our work there, we got done just in time for them to do top coat. We, this month we've had two water main breaks on Hickory Drive, and it's at the westmost intersection down the Dead End Road. That main's in really bad shape, and I've actually got more to touch on that later. We, OFS Point 13 at 17th and Chestnut, we installed a new water service for them, two inch in diameter, and did away with their old one-inch service. We have started the fall hydrant flushing program as well, so we'll continue that till about mid-October, by the time we get done with that. And we just, we flush those hydrants twice a year to keep our mains in good shape and keep water turned over and good water to the community. Our Washington Street project is almost finished. We've got one more intersection at Third and Washington to get in and do a tie-in to tie in Third and Washington back together. Other than that, it is all complete. And St. Henry called after hours, they had another board crew stick a drill through one of the top of their water mains, and it's their main line to their tank again. So we sent two guys in a truck for three hours to help them, and they'll reimburse us for that as well. And then to finish up our week, last week, we had a water main break on our own main line from our Potoka pit to our east water tower. line from our Potoka Pit to our east water tower. It was a pretty large leak, it actually washed out Cherry Street. We ended up having to put a large portion of the road back. We lost about 17 feet in our east water tower in about an hour and a half, so it was a pretty bad one.
It's a big leak.
Yes, it was. Yeah. Other than that, as far as the work that we've been doing and the way the plant's been going distribution, that's all I have for that. If anybody has any questions on any of that stuff.
What was the cause of that big leak? Was it a, was it a crack or a bow out?
You know, the, the water was still extremely warm, the ground's starting to cool, and that's the only thing we can think of as far as anything else. There's, there's not anything on that line to create water hammer, so.
It wasn't corroded or anything?
No, no, actually, the main looked really good. It was in really good shape. The only, the only thing we can figure, and we have it a lot this time of year with the temperature fluxes, the, the temperature of the water and the temperature of the ground, if you don't mix.
The shock, yeah. Well, I know we had another line somewhere that was East First that was very bad shape several years back. It was corroded and it just, it was a repetitive problem until I think they finally fixed it. But the main's good, it's just a.
Yep, the main's good, just, just happened to be a fluke and a water main break.
So since you're done on Washington, is that Street Ten scheduled, are you paid?
We're almost.
I said, you're almost, yeah.
I'm in Washington, but I do believe.
I know there's a hydrant that you need to pay.
I did talk, I did talk to Kelly Allen, he told me that he believes it's to be replaced in the next two years.
I think it's on 22.
So, you know, that, that was a big concern there. Whenever they started paving, they paved up to Short Fourth and we wanted to make sure that we were gonna have it all done by the time they proceeded on down to First Street.
That's done in two halves, I think, because of us, it's such a big project.
Yeah.
I know, we've got pretty tore up. We, we swapped 34 service lines that, from Third Street to First Street.
I drive it every day.
Yeah.
You know where to take your zags out and try to do it.
There's no, there's no right lane anymore.
Utility Department cut all that and all this. Yeah.
He's life without you, John, you know that.
Yeah. Yep, all this. Other than that, nobody has any questions on that. Kind of want to touch back on the SRF loan with the money that we have left. I did reach back out to Uvalars and Ruckers. Ruckers told me the same thing, that they just couldn't get anything. They couldn't offer a quote. They, they had nothing to offer. Uvalar's Sons did send me a quote and the quote from Sternberg's on the 2022 Ford F-350 that was the lowest last meeting is still the lowest bid at $52,155, $55.52. They did give us a trade-in value on our truck for $9,000. Uvalars also gave us a trade-in value on that truck and it's on that packet of papers I left up for you guys. I just got all this done today, they just got me a quote. But their trade-in value is only $6,500. So with the price of the meters at $79,000 and the truck with the trade-in puts us at And we were planning to have, I believe, around $130,000 left of that loan after all the bills are paid. So we've still got to have one from Buzz and we have it, it just hasn't been paid yet. So the funds will definitely be there for both of those items.
I think you mentioned too that it's okay to carry it over to the next year.
Yeah, that is correct, we did speak about that. We were in contact with, me and John Wetzel with Midwestern Engineers set down. He does have to type up an addendum for that and we'll have to put it out to public notice two days in advance before we spend the money. And they are willing to leave that loan open for as long as we need. She said it happens all the time. She said anytime there's money left over, people will use it and.
They gotta write, give that to us in writing, in fact.
She, she did say that if it took a year, it could stay open for a year and it would be fine. It's not uncommon to have happen. And that's, that's all the information I have on the truck and the meters for that loan.
So we're gonna, we're gonna purchase another round of meters and a truck.
The last 250 meters, our, our year five meters, we didn't, we weren't able to purchase the full 500 amount, so Gary purchased 250 at that time, that's what we purchased. So with this loan, we're able to finish our purchase of meters and that meter program will be completed. With the exception of all the large diameter meters for all the industries, we, we're replacing them as we can, as many as ours.
Do we need a motion for them to go ahead with that?
Did we need that last time, something?
With the meters, we made a motion.
I thought we did, yeah.
But the, the truck, we were still, Steve wanted me to reach back out and see if we could get second round quotes.
I guess approved, again, the subject of financing.
Right. Subject of financing. The other half of that is, is, what's the availability next spring?
They're saying next, it'll be this kind of spring.
Either one of, no matter what, even at the higher price, Evil Hair's?
Right.
Nobody's got one.
Right, nobody has one.
I didn't, I'm not surprised, I thought I'd ask though.
And you, GM actually pulled out of government discounts. They're not doing any government discounts this year, they said. They just got the email last week due to lack of trips.
They don't have, they don't have any, they don't have any to discount.
I was gonna say, it doesn't matter, they'll have.
They don't have any anyway, so.
You are correct.
So do you need a motion included, to, to?
Yeah, we need a motion including based upon getting the loan and financing for, using the money that's there.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Motion made by Steve. I have a second. Second by Tim. Roll call vote.
Kissling.
Hi.
Dubon.
Hi.
McFerrin.
Hi.
Where?
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Bye-byes, no nays.
Thank you. The next thing I have.
Oh, you're done.
Oh, no, oh, no.
Wait a minute here now.
Not at all, I need more. The two water leaks that I told you I'd turn back around and touch base. That water main right now, we've had the two water main breaks within the last two weeks. The first one, we had to sleep a piece of pipe in. The main is falling apart, kind of like you said, just doing the same thing the water main on First Street did. It's the westmost intersection, Hickory kind of does a loop there. So it's the westmost intersection and it's on the north side of Maple Street, so it's the Dead End Road there. There is 540 feet of water main in the ground that needs to be replaced. In order to replace it, we have to put it back in the same location, so we would have to run a temporary water main as well. So material to, in order to replace that water main, we have to buy a little extra material that is reusable for any other time after run a temporary water main, so it's not just throwaway material. It'll be very beneficial in the future. We would have to run a temporary water main while it's being done. I reached out to Utility Supply, Mueller Meters, and EJ Prescott, and I did that on Monday. I got three quotes back today. Mueller was not able to quote just due to, they said they didn't have any material on the ground. EJP sent me a quote back, they were the lowest bid at $15,559 for all the material to do that job. They said that they've got the material on the ground and can ship it out as soon as we were approved to purchase the material. We have, we do have that main, we have one valve shut completely off and one valve throttled down to reduce pressure on that pipe, so we don't continue to blow it out right now. So it's, it's in a place where it really needs some attention.
What was the other estimate? You said you had three?
We did. EJP came in, came in at $15,559. Utility Supply came in at $18,024.68 and Waller Meter was not able to give us a quote.
Ned Project, you'll do in-house, you'll do the labor?
Yeah, we will, we will do that in-house. And that's as soon as, as soon as we can get approval and get the material built here, we'll start on it.
Is that, does that main come out of that tank?
It, it doesn't come out of it, it does tie directly into that transmission main though.
It does draw into that?
Yeah.
Do you need a?
Is that?
Go ahead, Tim.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that, is that in the road or is that along the sides and ends the road?
No, it's on the east side behind the curb line, so we'll be out of the road.
Oh, good.
That was my question, why, why do we have to keep it where it is? Because it's behind the curb?
Get all the other utilities there and it's, yeah, behind the, there's two inline valves and it's, it's already behind the curb line. We, there's potential where we don't have to pull the old out, we can move it over and stay in our easements and be able to run in there and not pull the old out. And if we can do that, that's probably what we'll do. The old main is about seven feet deep. We like to stay about three feet to the top of the pipe, so we're, we're kind of hoping that we can run almost directly over it and not have to worry about pulling much of it out of the ground. And still leave enough room in there for us to be able to make future repairs. If it's something where we're gonna be right on top of each other, we won't do that, but if we would, if we were wanting to dig it out and to replace the main in the same area and keep a three-foot depth, we would have to dig the water main out, fill the trench in with sand up to that point and then start laying our water main. And we're talking about a lot bigger number as far as the material.
Just from my own trivia, what, how big a main is it?
It's an eight-inch.
Really?
Yep, and we'll be putting it back with an eight-inch main.
How old is the existing one?
Sorry?
What do you estimate the age of the existing one to be?
I honestly couldn't tell you. I don't, I don't even want to take a guess, because I'll be wrong.
Probably 1970s, I'm guessing.
I'd say that, that subdivision's probably in the seventies.
Early, early, early seventies, I think. So, and the water main, and the water and sewer would have been the first things in the ground probably before anything. Do you need an action?
He has, he actually needs a motion to purchase, right?
Approved, approved.
Approved, approved.
From EJP.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase from EJP.
Motion made by Steve.
I'll second it.
Second by Jeff. Roll call vote.
Kissling.
Hi.
Dubon.
Hi.
McFerrin.
Hi.
Where?
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Pretty reasonable price, actually.
Yeah, it really is. You know, there'll be a little backfill there, a little sand and stuff to go along with that, but that's the, that's gonna be the majority of it. We, there's only five services on that line, but that ties in that whole loop up there on top of the hill to the transmission main and for circulation and keep water good, it's, it needs to be tied back in, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not important unless you're one of the five services.
Yeah, exactly.
That's right.
Anything else?
Well, I think I've asked for enough tonight.
Okay, sit down. Since Phil's not here, he's on vacation this week, so next thing on agenda, I guess, is the, as far as our public media, as far as the budget documents come, is that correct?
That's right. It's the date, time, and place set for the public hearing on the 2022 budget. So if you want to open and take comments or whatever.
Does anybody have any, the meeting is now open for public notice. Does anybody have any comments? And I want to make any comments and if I want to just sit there and look or what?
I do, I do go, we'll go over this a little bit.
Okay.
Total budget for the city is $10 million, 948,142. Anticipating a tax rate of $1.14.48. We're gonna advertise it to be at $2, $2.02. And that's because we're gonna use $140 million of assessed value versus what our current assessed value is, is right at $203,000. So by, by increasing the rate, if there is some kind of a, an AD adjustment due to appeal, we won't lose any money. So, but the rate won't, I'm estimating the rate won't be any more than $1.14 change.
If I remember correctly, it'd be less than this year, right?
Yeah.
It's a reduced rate, right?
And I made the changes that we talked about at the last budget meeting. Added the 25,000.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, for sidewalks.
So is there any discussion? I'd move the public meeting closed.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all right, there's a motion to close it.
Second.
Second by Mr. McFerrin. Roll call vote.
Kissling.
Hi.
Dubon.
Hi.
McFerrin.
Hi.
Where?
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Next, we have to introduce the ordinance, right?
Right. That would be ordinance 2021-35.
And then do I hear a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Motion to introduce.
Motion introduced by Steve.
I second.
Second by Tim. Roll call vote.
Kissling.
Hi.
Dubon.
Hi.
McFerrin.
Hi.
Where?
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. The adoption meeting will be on the 14th, 12th of October, I think, that's our next meeting, 12th of October.
14th, I thought you said.
I had no 14th for the public.
Oh, yeah.
So it's the 12th, it's the 12th.
It's the 12th.
Next thing is Evil Hair.
The League Stadium, I guess, was in need of sod repair and the total dollar amount Mike Evilar and Evilar Oil said that they would contribute $5,854 to that, to, to help on infield sod at League Stadium. And there's a fund already set up to accept donations for League Stadium, it's the League Stadium Fund, so you would just have to accept the donation.
So we just need a motion to accept, right?
We better jump on that.
Jose, you want to jump on that one? Jose's making a motion to accept the payment.
Okay.
I'll second it. Second by Jeff. Roll call vote.
Kissling.
Hi.
Dubon.
Hi.
McFerrin.
Hi.
Where?
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Five ayes and no nays.
Very nice.
The other thing is just the August utility financial statements are on board pack for you, for your review.
That's fun reading too, by the way.
Off for it, yeah.
There's, there's no motion needed for that, it's probably just for information.
No, that's just for your information.
Do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Is there any other items to be brought up for the council? Any items from the citizens want to be brought up, anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Kissling. Second by Tim. Roll call vote.
Kissling.